I'd like to call to order this Town Council Regular Work Session Wednesday, April 13th, and the time is 7:10. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dale, could we have a roll call, please? Present.
Here.
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 Thank you. And welcome to the public. This is a public hearing with school committee participation relative to the Town Council's preliminary budget for the fiscal year 2011-2012, as adopted on March 21st, 2011. This public hearing will address both the general fund and the school fund. This is a public hearing, and it is Budget Session Number One. We have been working on this budget since December, so we've had many meetings, and we hope that the public will be pleased with the final outcome. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Alfred. Thank you.
Let me walk through the budget process. The municipal budget process is governed through the South Kingstown Town Charter, and more specifically, the amendments to the charter that were enacted on November 6th, 2006. The process began, budget process began with a joint session of the council and the school committee on December 20th, 2010, as an initial budget hearing. Subsequent to that hearing, the town manager and the school superintendent developed proposals for the 2011-2012 budget years. The school committee made revisions to the submitted budget from the superintendent, and the school committee submitted to the town manager on February 14th, a recommended school committee budget for 1112. The budget proposed a property tax transfer to the school fund of $48,680,096. After review of the school committee's recommended budget proposal and the transfer requirements, the town manager incorporated the transfer to the school fund within the manager's budget at a lesser dollar amount. The lesser dollar amount was $48,680,096, down to $48,216,336. That has also been incorporated into the preliminary budget of the council. This was a $463,760 reduction, yet it also represented a $306,408 increase over what the current year allocation was. The town manager submitted the town manager's proposed budget document to the Town Council on March 1st. Four budget work sessions were conducted on March 7th, 8th, 9th, and on the 15th. The March 15th session was in conjunction with a school committee and a review of the school fund. The council adopted their preliminary budget for the 1112 year on March 21st. By charter, the Town Council and the school committee must now hold two public hearings. The first of those two public hearings is this evening; the second public hearing is tomorrow evening. Each of those sessions are scheduled for seven o'clock starts. During the period subsequent to the adoption of the preliminary budget, qualified electors or may circulate petitions to increase or decrease specific line items within either the municipal or school fund. Requirements for those petitions is a requirement to first have approval through the town clerk's office of the form of the petition, and then required to receive 25 signatures of qualified electors. Those must be submitted on or before April 21st to the town clerk's office for canvassing authority certification. If any petition of this nature is filed in accord with the charter, the Town Council must specifically vote to approve, reject, or to amend the petition as presented prior to the adoption of the final Town Council budget, which is scheduled for hearing on April 25th. After adoption of the Town Council's final budget, qualified electors again, with a need for 200 signatures for requests of appropriation increase or decrease of no less than $250,000 in either direction, again, after approval through the town clerk's office on the form of the petition, are required to collect in excess of 199 signatures or 200 signatures are required at minimum. If that is certified as a qualified referendum petition, a referendum would then be conducted, and conducted on June 7th of 2011. That's the background in which we are working within the budget process at this point. Now, I'd like to go to the broadsheet. Copies are available at the door, and if anybody needs one, Andy will be glad to help you out with it. The first page of the document provides a summary of the property tax impact associated with implementation of the Town Council's preliminary budget, where it adopted as the final document. As noted, the size of the tax levy, regardless of whether the council uses a $500 motor vehicle value credit or employs a $3000 value credit, the tax levy remains the same. The tax levy, as shown midway through the spreadsheet, indicates the tax levy requirements The difference between the two columns is the amount of money that would be generated from the property tax levy associated with motor vehicles. As you can see, if a $500 exemption is used, we would collect or levy $4,213,207. If the exemption were set at $3000, the motor vehicle excise tax levy would drop by approximately $1,030,000 to $3,182,964. If it does drop by that $1,030 and the $3,000 is employed, what it means is that the tax levy doesn't change; it means that the amount of money required from the real estate role and personal property role has to increase. So, under the column for a $500 value credit, you would raise 61.9 million from real estate. That would require a $14.30 tax rate, or 11 cents over current year. If the $3,000 was employed, it would require $62.937 million from the real estate personal property role, which would require a $14.54 tax rate, or 35 cent increase. Again, the increase in the levy doesn't change. The levy increase from one year to the next, from the current year to next year, is a $621,413 increase in levy. That's .95 percent over what the current year is. I'd also note that the current year's levy was 1.54, I believe, and the year prior to that, about 1.2. So, over the past three years, less than a 1.5 percent levy increase has been employed in the development of the municipal budget programs. The Town Council will need to make a decision on whether to employ the 500 or the $3,000 value credits in advance of June 15th, when the role is certified. I would expect that the council would take action on that at the time that they would adopt the final budget on April 25th. Certainly, there can be discussion on that issue. A few points as far as the difference in the values. At a $500 value, there would be 28,804 cars that would be taxed. At a $3,000 value, that number would drop to 25,008. The difference of that 3,800 vehicles that would go untaxed under the $3,000 value are vehicles that would have been within that $2500 range, between the 500 and $3,000. That's what accounts for the $1,030,000 reduction in tax levy available from motor vehicles where the change instituted in the 2011-2012 year. If there's no questions on the property tax impact schedule, I'll move on. If we move to the second page of the broadsheet, the first boxed area documents what the total municipal program is for the 2010-11 and 1112 years. It shows what was budgeted in 1011, as well as what's recommended in 1112. The overall increase for the general fund is shown at a .81 percent increase, or $588,000. Moving through the school fund is showing a decrease from the current year expenditure statement of $58.6 million, down to $58.4 million. Moving through our utility funds, water, wastewater, we'll go through each of those individually. All of these secondary funds or utility funds and special revenue funds are also a part of the municipal program. The overall budget for the municipal program, inclusive of all funds, is a $89,774 budget proposal. That's been adopted as the preliminary budget by the council. It's up .12 percent, or $109,000, over the current year budget program. And we can move through the general fund first. And again, if there's any questions, I'd ask people to come forward to the microphone and stop me at any time. General fund, we've broken out the program in terms of major functional areas. Major functionarials areas demonstrate a need for an operating program of $19.812 million. That's a 2.9 percent increase over the current year. The driving cost associated with general fund increase for the 1112 year is directly associated with employment benefits and service costs. Principally, changes in the retirement percentage share increases that occurred for the 1112 year will require an increase of about $258,000 over what the base year funding level was for that. Healthcare increases would amount to approximately $49,000. So, between those two areas, we're seeing about a 6.5 percent increase over what the current year cost on employment service costs were in the current year. Having said that, I would place both council and school committee on notice that sizable increases are also anticipated for the 2012-2013 year. Today, the State Retirement Board accepted recommendations provided in an evaluation report. Evaluation report looks at the last 10 years of actual practice and compares the assumptions used over those 10 years to what actual practice has been. Recommendations that are within that document will have major impacts on state government and local government. The projections alone on certified teacher costs will escalate from about 13.23 percent of salary up to over 21 percent. If the salary base used in development of the 2011-2012 school fund were employed, it would show an approximately $2.1 million increase need in the 1213 year to service that retirement employer cost from South Kingstown. I'm not suggesting that that will be what the final number is. The evaluation report that has been provided through the retirement board, through their consultant, really provides an unvonnished look at what the unfunded liability is associated with the various plans for state employees and for teachers and for municipal employees. We have not seen what the rate adjustments will be on the MRR system, which governs the non-certified teaching personnel, as well as the municipal employees. Hopefully, we will see that data within the next few weeks. What is important to note is that, once the assumptions have been reduced, based on existing statute, actuarial values must be computed, and the rates are not negotiable. What would have to change, if we were not going to reach, and we'll use that 21 percent figure on the school side for certified teachers, if we're not going to reach that, it would mean that meaningful pension reform would be a necessity, or revisions on the various methods as to cost share. At this point, the municipal school districts are paying 60 percent of the cost, and 40 percent come through state funding. Our concern is also on what that cost distribution may be in the future. So, again, this is not part of tonight's budget program, but it's certainly a strong indication of what the planning requirements will be as we go forward. Debt service increases in the general fund are down. These were programmed reductions that the council has been directing over the past five years, as we have reduced the size of the borrowing that the town is involved with, both for school and for municipal purposes. We are looking at reductions of about $293,000 on municipal and school debt, or about a 6.6 percent decrease. Capital budget is up about 1.47 percent, or $18,000, and the transfer to the school is up .64 percent, or $306,000. That provides a total general fund of $73,372,050. The income statement associated with the general fund really has two different line items that have seen substantive change. One is that in the state revenue transfers, we are anticipating an increase in aid over what was budgeted in the current year of about $157,000. That is directly related to, last year, at the time the budget was developed, there was no credible plans in place to provide any funding associated with motor vehicle reimbursement. So, at that point, we budgeted $0 for motor vehicle reimbursement. We will receive during the current year about $160,000. We have budgeted $160,000 as a placeholder for the 1112 year, and that's why we're seeing the substantive increase in the state aid revenues that are there. But again, if you look at the 2009-2010 year, you can see that while we're budgeting $2.3 million, it's $2 million less than what it was two years ago. Another line item, which is in a state of decline, is in transfer from other funds. That really deals with three accounts that are economy-associated. One is a reduction of $125,000 in open space funding that is available through the real estate conveyance tax that pays down debt service associated with open space. We've had to reduce that by $125,000, based on the slowdown in the local market of real estate sales. We've also seen about a $13,000 decrease in impact fees that are used also to pay down debt service, and about $30,000 from the South Road School recaptured to pay for the debt that is directly associated with the interest lost once the school stopped being used as a school facility. I don't think there's any other major changes that are there in the revenue statement. I'd be glad to answer any questions. If there are none, we would move on to the school fund. Again, the school fund that has been revised by the school committee and is recommended and is presented tonight is for $58,434,545, again, down $213,000 from the current year expenditure statement. Subsequent to the presentation of the manager's budget, but before the council adopted the preliminary budget, the governor's budget was delivered. The governor's budget provided a need for restructuring the revenue statement within the school fund, based on the revenues that would be coming from the state government. Essentially, there was approximately $183,557 more coming through various state and federal programs than had been anticipated in the development of the budget. At that time, we were anticipating balancing the budget with $383,000 less from state aid and increasing our dependence on funds held in the undesignedated fund balance that was originally targeted at $775,000. Based on a recommendation from town staff, the school committee agreed to reduce that undesignedated fund balance transfer to $392,066. All other accounts on the expenditure statement remain the same. It's important to note that the school fund, after revised, showed a reduction of $463,000 from what had been originally submitted by the school committee, and this was based on review of some of the line items within the school budget with the school administration, and a concurrence to be able to make those types of reductions. If there's questions on the school fund, I'd like to entertain those at this time and allow the superintendent and business manager to address them, are there questions as far as the school fund is concerned as presented? If there's not, we'll move on.
Steve, if I can just give the, does anyone in the public like to comment or come to the mic with any questions? I just wanted to make sure that was clarified. Thank you, Steve.
Moving on to the third page, Peasdale Office Building. The town operates the Peasdale Office Building, which we purchased in 1983, as a special revenue fund. The program cost is up approximately 10 percent on the $90,000. That's directly related to the town incorporating $8,000 in capital budget expenditures that are anticipated in the 1112 year, but you can see that the revenue statement, we will still be producing more income than what the expenditure requirements will be for Peasdale Office Building. Revenues for that fund come from rental income, private sector rental on first and second floor, as well as the basement area, and the use of some undesignedated funds. If there's no questions, I'll move on to the Guild. The Neighborhood Guild is also operated as a special revenue fund. The program increase is approximately 2 percent for the 2011-2012 year. Most of that increase is directly related to anticipated program expenditures increasing, yet at the same time, user revenues increasing to, because we're expecting more people to participate in programs on a fee basis, and that's why there's an expenditure increase in that Neighborhood Guild. Trust funds, which are managed through the trustees of the school fund, provide for $424,000 of that total cost. Essentially, the objective with the Guild is to have the cost of heat, light, and maintenance provided through the trust funds, and for the various programs that are operated, either with our music program, youth program, adult arts program, to be self-sufficient. Most are self-sufficient, and we're able to expand this budget based on what the demands are of the public for the various programs that we offer. If there's no questions on Neighborhood Guild, we'll move to the Senior Services Program. Senior Services Program is also a special revenue program. Within that senior program, we identify four specific programs. One is a senior transportation program, which we're seeing a decline in what the cost would be next year. However, if we were putting the budget together today with the cost of gasoline, I think that account would need to be somewhat increased, and we'll have to make adjustments throughout the year. Adult Day Services is a program that we operate on Old Post Road for persons needing care assistance for the elderly. That program is supported both by client fees and for state reimbursement through Medicare program. Senior Services Center program on Broad Rock Road also encompasses the nutrition program, which provides the daily meal center. The overall program cost is anticipated to be at $726,000. It's important to note that this program has become regional in nature. Narragansett is contributing about $100,000 toward the cost of our program. This is to reimburse costs associated with residents of that community participating in either the Adult Day Services Program or enjoying the meals or activities at the senior center. North Kingstown is also contributing about $37,000 for the 1112 year, and that money is for reimbursement of the costs associated with their residents that are using the adult services program. Again, revenues are equal to what the projected expenditure base will be for that program.
Polly.
Steve, have we completed the expansion of the Adult Day Service Center?
The plans are about two weeks from being completed on the center. We hope to have that out to bid in May, and to have construction starting around the beginning of July. It's not going to be a large addition, so it'll probably be a couple of months to three months for us to be able to get that job completed. We're hoping to have it done by October 1st. Other questions? None? We'll move on to the enterprise funds. First is the Water Enterprise Fund. Water Enterprise Fund for 1112 at $963,049. It's about $4,589 more than the current year. It's important to note that with each of the enterprise funds, full depreciation on assets is taken as a budgeted expense on an annual basis. That's why, when you look at other expenses, it shows that $336,000 of that depreciation is budgeted at about $184,000 of that $336,000 level. Debt service on the two water bonds that are outstanding are at $86,000, and the capital budget at about $57,000. The rest of the program is principally in the source of supply. All water that's purchased for the Middle Bridge Water System and the South Shore Water Systems come through United Water. We're anticipating that a mid-year rate increase will come through United Water, based on their filing or anticipated filing with the Public Utilities Commission. The current rate schedule provides for $165 for 10,000 cubic feet of water use. A $10 increase per year is going to be required to take that up to $175. Additional units, and this would be something like Mary Copders, where you've got one water line going in and you've got all sub-users, the $69 per sub-unit will go to 75, and the cost of high water volume will go from $2.71 per 100 cubic feet of water up to $2.91. For that hundred and seventy-five dollars, folks will be getting five thousand cubic feet of water in that base fee. In the wastewater enterprise fund, we are looking at a program of three point two million dollars to support that, that, that operation. Again, depreciation is a, a major factor in the non-business expenses. And so too is the capital budget and contingency components. It's important to note that the, the town has implemented changes for energy purposes. Energy savings, two high-velocity blower pumps have been installed. We're anticipating a forty-five thousand dollar reduction in the energy costs associated with the operations of the, of the treatment plant in the eleven-twelve year. We've also got a grant application pending with, as a, in an attempt to be able to bring natural gas up West Marlin Street in Narragansett to be able to again, get away from the use of, of diesel fuel. We're projecting a need for a rate increase on the wastewater fund. This will be the first rate increase since two thousand and eight. The current rate is two hundred and twenty dollars per, per household. That would go to, up by five dollars to two hundred and twenty-five dollars. The cost of excess use over ten thousand cubic feet of water would go from two seventy-five to two eighty-five. If there's no questions, I'll move on to the solid waste. Solid Waste Enterprise Fund, no rate increases are, are proposed. The bag tag fee of a dollar eighty, which was, was to go up in the eleven-twelve year, the council agreed to a, a three-year extension with the existing vendor that operates the transfer station. He will be maintaining the bag tag rates at, at a stable price of the, the dollar eighty. Bag tags were about eighty-five thousand tags being sold a year. With the negotiated revisions, we will be guaranteed sales equal to ninety-five thousand. So that it will increase what the base rents will be paid for at the transfer station. Major increases that are in the solid waste enterprise fund is that the solid waste enterprise fund not only operates the transfer station, it also provides as a means of paying costs associated with the closure of the Rose Hill and Plains Road, Plains Road Superfund sites. At this point, we're paying for two bond issues associated with those two facilities, the operation and maintenance costs associated with those facilities, and based on a negotiated settlement with the state, we're paying approximately forty-five thousand dollars a year to reimburse the state for the cost that the state incurred in the closeout of the, of the Rose Hill facility. So that's why we're seeing the superfund increase from a hundred and eighty to two seventy-five. The two seventy-five represents the first year that we are going to be providing reimbursement to the state in addition to continued service of the one point five million dollars in debt that was incurred for the closeout of those two facilities. If there's no questions, let me move on to the back page. The back page is really a function of all of the eight funds that we operate with. Once the money is appropriated in each of those funds, if it has relationship to another fund, the monies need to be transferred from one fund to the other. There are no IOUs when it comes to our budget process. The money is transferred for expenditure purposes and is recognized as a, as an expense against the fund that had the money appropriated as well as a revenue to the fund that is the receiving agent. The first is the capital budget. The capital budget that the council adopts within the general fund is then distributed out to the various capital reserve funds to allow us to be able to pay for the improvements that have been programmed within the capital budget. It also provides me with an opportunity to hold back expenditures if in fact, we feel that equipment can continue to service the town and we may have monies that were appropriated in the ten-eleven year or the eleven-twelve year and that may not be spent until the twelve-thirteen year. This is principally done with equipment acquisitions in public services or public grounds. It also provides us with an opportunity to delay project constructions if in fact, potential grant programs are available, that could offset some of those municipal costs. The second resolution provides for a similar activity, and this would be through the school fund for the technology to move twenty thousand dollars out of their school fund into the school improvement fund. Number three is the transfer of the impact fees. Again, impact fees are collected through the, and, through the impact fee reserve fund. Those monies are then transferred on an annual basis as a revenue into the general fund to pay down debt service. One associated with school debt, second for those programs that are recreation. That's numbers three and number four. Number five is the, is the open space. As I had mentioned earlier, we have two hundred and twenty-five rather than three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that will be transferred once the budget is adopted into that, into the general fund from the open space reserve fund. Number six is the Guild Trust Funds, which I mentioned earlier. Four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars needs to be authorized to come out of the, that reserve to go into the Neighborhood Guild operating the, our program. The, number seven is a ten thousand dollar transfer from the Public Works Improvement Fund to the Public Works Building Fund. We operate the Public Services Building on Route One as a, as a, as a capital fund because it services the wastewater and water programs. So rents are, are backcharged against those different, different programs. This also allows us to recover from our regional partners in the wastewater program for both water, for the wastewater program, for operating costs associated with that building and capital improvements to that building. This is one of those transfers. On number eight, the utility fund transfers, these are the backcharges for administrative expenses that the general fund provides services, whether it's payroll or accounting for water, wastewater, solid waste, each of the funds that are listed there. And in exchange, those dollars come in to pay down our cost of the general fund operations. The last one, the three-seventy account EMS billing services. I think everyone's aware that the town uses a billing service to collect for EMS runs. The billing service builds the user's insurance carrier. The insurance carrier pays into the enterprise fund, the, the billing fund, and then on an annual basis, we take a portion of the monies recovered from insurance and bring that into the general fund to pay down the cost of the EMS services for the following year. Number nine, other general fund transfers. This is to deal with a transfer from the ten-eleven year that was not included in last year's budget. The, and the transfers of the eleven-twelve year for the school fund. This is how the school fund gets the forty-eight million, two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, or the elderly services program gets the three hundred and forty-one. Wastewater gets ninety-two hundred dollars to pay for the cost of the ISDS management program, since the wastewater program provides services for ISDS maintenance and, maintenance, yet that has nothing to do with the costs that revenue is being generated from the users of the sewer system. Number ten, compensated absences fund. Money is appropriated on an annual basis in the police department and is in anticipation of retirees. At the time that retirement occurs, we would be required under labor contracts to be able to pay for unused vacation and sick accrual for those departing, members of the department. The overall liability associated on the municipal program for all uncompensated absence, all uncompensated absences is approximately one point nine million dollars. The reserve fund that, the compensated absences reserve fund currently has a balance of about a million, so we're about fifty percent funded. Most communities don't recognize or put money aside for the compensated absences. What they do is do it on a pay-as-you-go basis. We're doing it both on a pay-as-you-go basis, but we're also recognizing that expense. What I don't want to see is to have a number of people retire, have a requirement to budget for that, and then have that included in the base for the following year. This way, we will pay it out of the operating program if it's available. If not, it will be drawn down from the compensated absences reserve fund. The number eleven is the two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven Reserve Fund Transfer of fifteen hundred dollars. Again, this is going to the compensated absences reserve based on liability that, that the PDOB fund has to the, for employee retirement. That is the overview of the municipal program that we have been working on, starting with the capital budget last August.
Thank you, Steve. At this time, I just want to ask Dr. Stringfellow or Mr. Rashad if they wanted to add any further dialogue to the table before we open it to the public.
Not at this time.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to open the mic to the public. If you'd like to come and comment, this is what tonight is all about. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Gary Borden. I am public director for the, the Domestic Violence Resource Council. And I'm, excuse me, I'm having coffee fits tonight, I apologize. I wanted to, we couldn't have anybody come to the March public hearing, so I wanted to come tonight so that I could publicly thank you for your support. Last year, we had over six thousand, six hundred services that we offered the residences of South County, and over a thousand of those were South Kingstown residents. And we also offered education to almost a thousand students on topics such as bullying and dating violence and cyber bullying and cyber stalking. Sixteen percent of our clients are from South Kingstown. Obviously, the five thousand that we asked for isn't sixteen percent of our budget, but we're asking for funds to cover costs of programs that we get no other government funding from. So once again, I want to thank you for your support. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Any questions here at the table? Mr. O'Neil?
Any federal money that you're worried about that comes your way?
Oh, we're always worried about it.
I know, but any direct earmarks, any direct budget cuts that will affect?
A lot of state budget cuts, and with the federal cuts, in the last two years, we've seen about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars lost in funding. And we usually have about a seven hundred to eight hundred thousand dollar annual budget. We had to let go quite a bit of staff two years ago, but we're managing to keep all eleven programs alive and continuing free to the public because our incredible staff and twenty-four volunteers managed to get things done. Thank you.
Thank you for the services.
Hi, I'm Steve Corley of West Kingston. And I don't want to talk too much about the budget numbers because I think people pretty much, you know, kind of set on those things. But I am kind of disappointed, I'll just say the schools because that's the biggest part of the budget, is that, is that we're gonna, looks like to me, we're gonna keep spending money on a school that we really don't need. And what I read in the paper kind of seemed to me that a committee that was gonna kind of work at eliminating a school really isn't gonna be doing that. And, you know, to me, five hundred thousand dollars a year could be spent on a lot of different things. And based on what the, the town manager said about, you know, basically train wreck coming down the pipeline with the retirement, you know, it's everywhere, including social security system. But based on that, when you're looking at the, the contract negotiations, sorry, when you're looking at contract negotiations, I hope you really look at things like, you know, why are we buying life insurance? You know, a hundred thousand dollars, we buying computers, buying a lot of different things. But the biggest reason I'm coming here is you're gonna be talking about three thousand dollar exemption on cars or five hundred thousand, or five hundred dollar exemption on cars. And, you know, when I was seventeen years old, if you drove a car that cost between two hundred and five hundred dollars, it was considered to be a beater. If it cost less than two hundred dollars, it didn't run. And, in Minnesota, it was critical that it had heat so that you could call it a winter beater. And that's all that mattered. It started, got you going. And, and now, if you sell a junk car, a junk car is worth about three to five hundred dollars. So five hundred dollar exemption is nothing. And I would suspect that everybody up here, or at least ninety-nine percent of you, itemizes your taxes, as I do. And, so I'm gonna itemize my taxes, whether I pay a car tax or a home tax. And I'll bet you that ninety-nine percent of those people that have a car that's worth less than nine thousand dollars don't, don't itemize. So disproportionately, that tax hurts them a little bit more than it's gonna hurt me. And I gotta pay the money, whether it comes out of my car, it comes out of my house, it's gotta be paid. But disproportionately, I would just hope that you look at getting that money from me, from my house, because I can itemize and get, I feel a little bit better when I get a little bit of it back. And I'll make the people in Wisconsin pay for it, or Wyoming, you know, it's kind of how it works. But I really thank you all for your service and, you know.
Good evening, Bob Trigger. What Steve just said was something I wanted to bring up as well. I'm glad he brought it up. I don't know how you came to the five hundred versus the three thousand. Is that a general consensus among the town council or is it something Steve came up with or, I mean, why pick a number like three thousand? Why not, I mean, if you're gonna pick a number, why not exempt the car completely? I mean, if you did that, I ran the numbers, you'd add, instead of going to either fourteen thirty or fourteen fifty-four, I think is what Steve has laid out, you'd go to fifteen twenty-seven, which is almost a dollar increase. Well, breaking it down to a household that say has two cars, and I don't know what the average price of a car in town is, but let's, I, I picked some arbitrary numbers, like say eleven thousand per car. My wife and I's are a little bit higher, maybe thirteen. But if, based on eleven thousand each, your house would have to be worth four twenty-five. And if you had two cars worth eleven thousand each, it would be a wash. So the median price of a house in South Kingstown is less than four twenty-five, I'm pretty, I don't know what it is. Do you know what it is? Well, so, in a case like that, quite a few people would make out, I don't know who would get hurt the most. Obviously, people with a little more money. People own beach houses down in Green Hill, they don't have cars registered in Rhode Island, probably would get hurt. Certainly, a few tax cheats that register their cars in Florida would get hurt. They're not paying those taxes anyway. But the people right now that are getting hurt, if you keep it at five hundred dollars, say someone who, you know, barely make it ends meet, their kids turn in sixteen or seventeen or they're going to college, you want to buy them a car, it hurts because you gotta buy them insurance, you gotta pay taxes on the car. So whether it's fair or not, and how it all breaks out, the other thing you have to look at is if you had no taxes on the car, maybe we'd sell a few more new cars. I mean, I, I would think it would drive the sale a little bit, you know? I mean, it's not the most, most intrusive, at least in South Kingstown, it's eighteen seventy-one, in Providence, it's seventy-eight dollars. I've talked to people that live up there, everybody's driving junk boxes. I mean, if you buy a new Beamer up there, you're gonna pay seventy-eight dollars per thousand, that's a lot of money every year. So, I mean, fortunately, we're not in that boat, but, but anyway, I'm glad Steve brought that up because I agree with him a hundred percent, that the five hundred dollars is, you know, why even bother? But that being said, I believe tonight when I walked in, I could see the town clerk waving over to Andy over here. I don't think it's, is the web streaming now? Well, I, I came a little late, my son wants it, he goes, oh, you're going to the meeting? I'm gonna watch it on the web. The system we have here for recording these meetings stinks. The system we have here for recording these meetings stinks. Even when it's working, the audio's pretty poor. Sometimes it's good, sometimes it's not so good. The video is terrible. You have a little screen, if you try to enlarge it, everybody's blurred. When it was broadcast live on TV, it was almost like being at the meeting. I know a lot of people would like to watch this, and not everyone is internet savvy, especially the elderly, and I think we need to make an attempt to make these meetings available to the average person in the town. So, that being said, that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ella, if I could, let me answer the question as far as the 3,000. In my budget message, I indicated that South Kingstown was one of 15 communities that adopted the $500 standard. Eleven other communities had rates between the $500 and $3,400. The remaining 12 were at 6,000. So, those at 6,000 were at the minority. Most are looking, I think even next year, there'll be a higher number that'll be close to the midpoint. And the midpoint is what I was using, because it shows you the 24 cents in either direction. So, that's why I was presenting it in that way. Obviously, if the council wanted to develop it in any other way, they could. But I think it's also important to note that if you take the average assessment on the house, which is the $346,376, that's taking total Class 1 properties, dividing it by the number of units available. So, some people say, "Well, gee, my house is worth more than that." That's what the average is. In the current year, that house would generate $4,915 in taxes. At the $14.30, that would go up $38. If you go to the 1454, that house would generate $121 more. However, with the tow, two motor vehicles with a reduction of $2,500 apiece, you would end up where the net increase for the house would, average house with two cars over the $3,000 value would be between $28 and $38. That's what the total increase would be, if you're using the $3,000 number. It's about a break even. So...
Can I, um, answer that question?
Of course.
Steve, what are you talking about? You're saying that the average car in South Kingstown's worth $3,000?
No, what I'm saying is that the average car in South Kingstown, when you take the numbers in the current year, were about $7,600. You subtract from that to $2,500, which is the increase from the 500 to the 3,000, and then you've got the savings on that vehicle. Vehicle prices are going up, in fact, it will go down if you haven't changed.
Well, that, actually, vehicle prices have gone up. Used cars, my truck is a 2004 Dodge pickup, it's gone up two years in a row, and that's discounting the fact that you went from 6,000 to 500. The actual value of it, minus the whatever the...
Yeah, but I'm using what the average price is. It's gonna be different with every single person. The person that's got four cars is gonna probably pay less than what they paid in the current year if the $3,000 was had.
Well, I know the whole used car market has gone up significantly, I don't know for every make and model, but obviously, with economic uncertainty, people aren't buying as many new cars, the blue book value went up on most used cars, the whole cash-for-clunkers thing, you took clunkers out and you destroyed them rather than putting them back in the used market, so that drove up the price of cars. So, in general, people are paying a lot on their cars disproportionately, I think, than they were a few years ago. That's my whole point.
Okay, and what, if they go to the 3,000, they'll be paying less, because, as I mentioned, I don't know if you were here at the time, is that you would drop about 3,800 cars if you went to the 3,000.
Oh, I agree with you. You're saying that if we up it to 3,000, the average homeowner would pay less.
What I'm saying...
Right, and if you upped it to...
I'm saying it's either or. If you keep it at the $15.30 and you keep the $500, the average house with two cars will pay about $38 more. If you do it with the $3,000 with a higher house tax, it's about $28 more. So, it's an either-or, because, so what I'm saying is that you can do it whichever way you want, it's not changing what the tax levy amount is. And what you're able to do with $3,000 is to drop a number of vehicles that are paying, that we're sending tax bills to that are very small.
I understand what you're saying, but I'm not sure you're following what Steve was saying, and what I'm saying is that there's people out in the community where, I mean, you're making it sound like there's only a savings of $10 if you go one way or the other. But that's not true with all people. There are some renters out there, there's some, there's college students, there's families that are just getting by with kids that need a car. If you factor all those things in, by eliminating the car tax, there's no doubt in my mind, or even by upping the exemption in any way, shape, or form, you're helping families that are struggling the most, even if, no matter what...
I think you're saying the same thing.
Okay, well, no matter how much you're saying, you're making it sound like it's only $10.
No, what I've said, and I'll repeat it again, is that if you're taking an average, if you're taking the average value of the vehicle and you're taking the average value of the house, whether or not it's at $14.30 or whether it's at $14.54, the tax effort increase is about the same.
Okay, so that's the average, but if you go down to the low end, they make out better, if you go out to the high end...
Well, of course, no one's disputing that, but you've got to, if, I can't use an illustration unless you said to me, "I got a person who rents a house and owns one car," then I could say to you, "Well, he's not paying house taxes to begin with."
Well, I'm only, I only, I only got back up here, Steve, because sometimes I think you say things to confuse people, and I think the essence of what we're trying to say is the people that need help the most would benefit the most with the car tax exemption. That's all that I'm trying to say, and I think that's what Steve was trying to say. And, I mean, do you disagree with that?
I think it's disrespectful for you to say that I'm trying to mislead people.
I didn't say mislead.
I think I've answered your question.
I say sometimes you say things that confuses people.
Bobby, I'm in agreement. We, um, that was disrespectful.
Well, I'm sorry if I sounded disrespectful, but obviously, you're a master of numbers up here, and many times, you spew out some numbers, and anytime anyone gets up and says something, you come back with a bunch more numbers, and, you know, people are sitting here, "Well, what, what, what?" So, that's what I'm saying. Make it as simple as possible, Steve.
Bobby, I'm sorry, excuse me. I think that the level of detail for every individual here in the town of South Kingstown is not able to be portrayed, even in this budget. And I think what Steve is trying to do is give us a feel for the average when he talks about, you know, the $346,000 average. It cannot be specific to, you know, all of the details we have here in the town. I think that what Steve does do is he tries to make it more simplistic so that people can understand it better. So, I beg to differ, and I will hold the line with respect here at this table.
I have nothing further to add, but I'm sorry if I offended you, Steve.
Thank you for apologizing.
I had a couple of questions. The first was about housing aid as it relates to, you know, some of the school buildings. So, I don't know if that's something that I can ask tonight, or if that can be punched up, but there's a document that does talk about potential housing aid loss for five different schools in town if they were to close. And I'm just really wondering over what period of time that's talking about. So, I don't know if you can answer that tonight or not, but...
I did a workup last year for the...
I can just, I can just put that as a question, and you can speak to it tomorrow if that's...
Yeah, I did a workup last year on that. Certainly, it can be done again, but I haven't revised the numbers based on a year later. Certainly, that can be put together.
Okay. Yeah, I think it would be good to get that clarification, whether it's on the town site or the school site. But there's a document on the school site that just has a lump sum number, which, if people don't follow the process, they may not know what that is. And then, I guess I just wanted to ask, um...
I'm sorry, Dr. Stringfellow would like to respond.
My on, Jonathan, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
So, I think what Jonathan is referring to is the Reconfiguration Advisory Committee has a document, they've asked for the total housing aid numbers. At the last Reconfiguration Advisory Committee, it was asked by one of the members if Mr. Rashat can get the details from Mr. Lord. And so, we're expecting that will be posted on the website within the next week. So, if he's not able to do it for tomorrow, then that's going to come up as business in the committee anyway.
That sounds great.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I just wanted to ask a question at this meeting again, I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but I just wanted to find out school committee's plans as far as advocacy to the legislators, bringing forth resolutions with certain ideas, whether it's regarding mandates or funding. And if I, if I had my mind right, that it was discussed at the beginning of February, and I don't think it's been re-approached, and the next meeting with the school committee is at the end of April, so I just wanted to at least kind of ask the question here tonight, whether or not that will be discussed at the school committee meeting at the end of April.
Yes, Jonathan, it will be discussed at the April 26 meeting.
Okay, thank you. You know, my concern there is I've kind of heard over the years, I've been going to these meetings for a little while, you know, the legislators do like the communications to come in, and, you know, sometimes they come in early in the process, things aren't as busy. I mean, you can imagine, up at the State House right now, everything's really starting to hit, you know, and everybody's read the pension reports and all the funding and all that. So, I think when we get into this timeframe, they're really starting to get jammed. So, you know, a little bit of a concern that maybe that was a lost opportunity to get something up to them early before things got too busy, but thank you for that. And I guess I would like to, you know, maybe have, hear a discussion at some point, whether it's town council, school committee, about the clerk-based system and, you know, the other gentleman that came up, talking about the recordings. I wonder if there's a way that the town and school can kind of find out from community members, you know, how they would like to use, you know, the communication tools available to them, you know, would they prefer it live on TV and what that cost is? Do they like the clerk-based system, that's like the rebroadcast of the meetings online? You know, I agree that it's not always perfect, but if that system that's in place, if the technology can be more reliable, I think that's the best system, because it really allows you to kind of go back, you know, search the meetings, look at certain information. So, I think that's the best system, in my opinion. I guess in a perfect world, you might have it broadcast live and available online, but, you know, that, maybe that becomes too much of a, there's too many budget constraints there. But I guess I would like to see that issue kind of discussed and see what the value is and what people would like to see on that. I guess that's it. Thank you.
Any further comments from the public?
Good evening, Michael Minelli. A question to Mr. Alfred. Sir, on page two, there is a total program of $138,342,000. Simplistically, if one were to subtract the school transfer fund, is the entire balance the cost to run the town of South Kingston? Or is there a number here that, what does it take to run the town of South Kingston, minus the school transfer?
Well, the school transfer, that $48,216, in addition to that, is that, is that the number that you're looking at, sir?
Uh, no. Above it, the $138,342,000. And I'm looking for a figure, what does it cost to run the town of South Kingston, leaving out the school? Z, plural.
It would be each of those funds, well, the way this is presented here is you've got $138,342,000. The $48,567 that I'm subtracting out is the school transfer, the transfer to the senior program, and the transfer to the wastewater program, because that's double-counted money.
Right.
So, the overall cost of town operations, including the school, would be $89,774,000. Okay? Now, if you said that you've got an $89,774,000, you could subtract the $58,434, which is the school's fund, and then you would also have to subtract from that the debt service associated with school facilities. And that number for the year was...
Regardless, the debt service was also associated with the cost of operating the schools. You know, take it all out.
I'm saying, yeah, between those two, between those two line items that are here, there's approximately $51.1 million that's in the general fund that goes to school purposes. Maybe that's the easiest way of answering your question to you.
So, if you remove the 51 from the 89 in the millions, the balance is what it costs to run the town of South Kingston?
I would say yes.
Yeah, well, I think what you have to do is, if you go down in the next box, if you're looking at the general fund, which is what, where the money goes to run the town, if you look at the operating costs, it's $19,812,157.
Yes.
That's the general operations. Then in addition to that, the next line, the $4,104,000 is the debt service. Some of that's school, most of it's school, some of it's town. And then in addition to that, you have your capital budget for the infrastructure costs, the equipment costs of $1,239,000. So, wrap those all up, and you're probably $21, $22 million.
Understand, but as a taxpayer, I would have to do that to find out how my town runs, if I wanted to, you know, make some examinations on how efficient all you guys are at running the town, as opposed to preying on the school committee.
I think that we're giving you more detail than that, because you've got each of the different enterprise funds that are listed there as well.
Okay.
So, I'm not sure what I could break out any differently for you. If you ask us to do something different, I can do it different. I would say to you that when you look at the property tax program itself, and you go back to the first page, when you look at property taxes and you say, "How much of property tax is going to schools and how much is going for municipal purposes?", that's shown there, where 77.2 cents of every dollar goes to the schools, either for their debt service or for their, the general fund transfer to them.
Mm-hmm.
So, essentially, 22.8 cents stays with the municipal services. But obviously, in addition to the property taxes, then you've got to add all the user fees that we collect for water or wastewater, those types of things.
Okay, so, you've got to calculate. There isn't any one line, net cost to operate the town of South Kingston, $58. You've got to plug away at it. I'm on the expense side, not the revenue side. Never mind the property tax and everything. What do you guys pay in rent, heat, light, salaries, vehicles, vacation days, lunch money, whatever you do? And where was that located?
That's on first page.
First page, first number.
Through the first line, under column labeled Town, you'll see appropriation.
But again, that's... Well, when he says "run the town," are you talking about all the utilities as well, or are you talking the general fund? If you're talking the general fund, that's what it costs us, is $22 million in appropriation, less the $7.4 million property taxes that stay with the town, of $14,789,000.
Okay, I'll have to rethink my question. I was just looking, whoever pays the bills for the town of South Kingston, you know, you pay National Grid for these lights, and you probably have a gasoline account, you have wages, salaries, fringe, et cetera, et cetera.
That's all part of the 22 million that's on that first page.
Thank you. Thank you.
Further questions from the public? Are there any questions here at the table, school committee or town council? Steve, did you have anything more before I adjourn?
Nope, that's, uh, that's everything that's on the broadsheets.
Well, do you want to go home early, or do you want to?
Give it a try.
I'll make it quick.
Oh, good. Thank you.
You know, I, I do find it amazing here, just, you know, fortunately, a few folks came out tonight, tough weather to hear us. My concerns, as you know, for ten years, I've been worried about this horrific math problem, which again, hit the newspaper today, and I've got the same detail Steve has. This is a huge number, I don't know what the formula's going to look like for next year, but whatever it's going to be, it's going to be tremendously damaging to our budget process, huge pension number. And it's not going to go away, it's going to continue for a number of years. If you were here at the last meetings, we have a severe worry of the acceleration of the education funding formula. And you can, I can promise you with the deficits here at the state, and if you looked at some of the recent lawsuits by Pawtucket and One Socket, they want money, they want more money, and, and it's going to come out of the wealthier communities, communities, and that's us. I've talked to you a million times about your neighbors, inflation, gas, oil, heat, food, I won't do it anymore. Another thing that we don't seem to pay attention to is that General Assembly last year and the governor passed a hundred and thirty-one million dollars of a motor vehicle taxation off to all of us, all the communities and all the citizens. Hundred and thirty-one million. Of course, it was going to be temporary, but there it is again this year, a hundred and thirty-one million dollars we have to parcel out. Governor Chafee has us looking at a hundred and sixty-five million. So just in this current year, three hundred and six million dollars of new taxes for the citizens of the state. If you do it on per capita basis, South Kingston's population of three percent, that's nine million dollars more that our neighbors are coughing up, nine million dollars more. This is unreal. Other thing that we really have to worry about here, the union negotiations, the school budget was put together with, I guess we refer to it as a zero and twenty, zero salary increase and a twenty percent co-pay, I certainly hope that's possible, but that's still an open question. Another thing I think we have to worry about is the census that was just released. Zero percent growth, basically, in the state of Rhode Island, that, that is not healthy news. This means our revenue growth in the future is going to be very limited, we'll be lucky to do two, three, four percent per year, and just with what the pension numbers announced today, just the pension increases, we'll eat all that up even at the four percent level annually. We have incredible difficulties coming at us specifically next year. I, I think we can get by the eleven, twelve year, but twelve, thirteen, thirteen, fourteen are going to be a nightmare. And with that in mind, I think you know I want to return to the neighborhood schools, I want South Road opened, I want Curtis Corner closed. The numbers work, even with a, a ten percent vacancy rate, if you average it out through the elementary schools, the high school, and leaving Broad Rock open, they'll be having a much, much less population with years down the road. But I'm also thinking that the school committee, with that in mind, what great economic stimulus for our community. Frankly, people move here, and I've been in the real estate business for twenty years, they've moved here for our schools, a, a good part of the reason here, they're for the schools, but neighborhood schools, heaven's sakes, if we, you know, sent them all out of town, they wouldn't be moving to this town. They want neighborhood schools, and I believe that's one way to bring property values back up in the South Road vicinity. But I can tell you, without doubt, in the Wakefield vicinity, even the talk of closing Wakefield School would be an absolute property tax value nightmare and an economic nightmare for our greater community and the Wakefield area. So I think we have got to make a decision this year on closing a school, specifically what I want is Curtis Corner. If you leave this off to next year, along with how we're going to budget with all these other issues I mentioned earlier to you, it is absolutely going to be a nightmare. So I think we need to really batten down the hatches and suck it up and see which school we need to close this year because the, the budgetary issues coming at us next year are going to be horrific. And I'd rather we get the geography done with the kids this year and worry about education and achievement next year, which really will hit us with the budget numbers. Thank you.
Any further comments? Steve Corley?
This would help me too, I think what the gentleman might have been asking for with the budget stuff is, when I'd gone to the school committee's budget meeting earlier and, and some of the meetings that I got here, you know, they actually, when you looked at the school expenditure or the town's expenditure, it said salaries are, vacation cost, healthcare cost is, so you could look at it and all those numbers start to mean a lot more. And I've seen those numbers in a lot of places, but this is like the final thing, it'd be a nice place to see it all wrapped up together. I know they're out there, I know they've been presented at different times, but this is kind of the, it'd be nice to see the couple more pages and the whole thing spread out, that's all, I think that's kind of what's being...
I think it's important to note that if, if you're looking for that level of detail, it's available on the website. The master budget that's there is approximately four hundred pages. It provides each department and provides it through the personnel component, services, materials and supplies, and equipment for each department. So you can get that level of detail, not just for the general fund, but also for each of the enterprise funds or special revenue funds. So that detail is available. What we attempt to do here is to, is to boil down that document. That document is what we go through on, this year we went through for the four nights. I don't know how, what I present in four nights, I could present tonight in that level of detail. So what I want to make sure people are aware of is that information is available. It's available for both the capital budget and it's available for the, for the general fund and all of the utilities. It's also available on the school website for the school fund itself, for their expenditure statement and revenue statement. So Steve, if you need that detail, we can get it for you.
Thank you. Okay, this meeting is to listen to the public, so this is your last chance to be heard until tomorrow night. So I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Any further comments here at the table? And we have our second budget public hearing tomorrow at seven o'clock in the town chambers. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Everybody's happy.
More simplistic so that people can understand it better. So I, I beg to differ, and I will hold the line with respect here at this table.
I have nothing further to add, but I'm sorry if I offended you, Steve.
Thank you for apologizing.
Jonathan Daly-Labelle. I had a couple of questions. The first was about housing aid, as it relates to, you know, some of the school buildings, so I don't know if that's something that I can ask tonight, or if that can be punched up, but there's, there's a, a document that does talk about potential housing aid loss for five different schools in town if they were to close. And I'm just really wondering over what period of time that's talking about. So I don't know if you can answer that tonight or not, but...
I did a, a workup last year for the...
I can just, I can just put that as a question and you can speak to it tomorrow if that's...
Yeah, I, I did do a workup last year on that, certainly it can be done again, but I haven't revised the numbers based on a year later. Certainly that can be put together.
Okay, yeah, I think it would be good to, to get that clarification, whether it's on the town site or the school site, but there's a document on the school site that just has a lump sum number, which if people don't follow the process, they may not know what that is. And then, I guess I just wanted to ask...
I'm sorry, Dr. Stringfellow would like to respond.
Mayan, Jonathan, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
So I think what Jonathan is referring to is the reconfiguration advisement committee has a document, they've, they've asked for the total housing aid numbers. At the last reconfiguration advisement committee, it was asked by one of the members if Mr. Rashat can get the details from Mr. Lord. And so we're expecting that that will be posted on the website within the next week. So if he's not able to do it for tomorrow, then that's going to come up as business in, in the committee anyway.
That sounds great. Okay, so I just wanted to ask the question at this meeting again, I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but I just wanted to find out school committee's plans as far as advocacy to the legislators, bringing forth resolutions with certain ideas, whether it's regarding mandates or, or funding. And if I, if I had my, my mind right, that it was discussed at the beginning of February, and I don't think it's been reapproached, and the next meeting with the school committee is at the end of April, so I just wanted at least kind of ask the question here tonight whether or not that will be discussed at the, the school committee meeting at the end of April.
Yes, Jonathan, it will be discussed at the April 26 meeting.
Okay, thank you. You know, my, my concern there is I've kind of heard over the years, I've been going to these meetings for a little while. You know, the legislators do like the communications to come in, and you know, sometimes they come in early in the process, things aren't as busy. I mean, you can imagine up at the State House right now, everything's really starting to hit, you know, and everybody's read the, the pension reports and all the funding and all that, so I think when we get into this timeframe, they're really starting to get jammed. So, you know, a little bit of a concern that maybe that was a lost opportunity to get something up to them early before things got too busy, but thank you for that. And I guess I would like to, you know, maybe have, hear a discussion at some point, whether it's town council, school committee, about the clerk-based system and, you know, the other gentleman that came up, talking about the recordings. I wonder if there's a way that, that the town and school can kind of find out from community members, you know, how they would like to use, you know, the communication tools available to them, you know, would they prefer it live on TV and what that cost is? Do they like the clerk-based system, that's like the rebroadcast of the meetings online? I, you know, I agree that it's not always perfect, but if that, if that system that's in place, if the technology can be more reliable, I think that's the best system because it really allows you to kind of go back, you know, search the meetings, look at, at certain information. So I think that's the best system, in my opinion. I guess in a perfect world, you might have it broadcast live and available online, but you know, that, maybe that becomes too much of a bu- there's too many budget constraints there. But I guess I would like to see that issue kind of discussed and see what, what the value is and, and what people would like to see on that. I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public?
Good evening, Michael Minelli. A question to Mr. Alfred. Sir, on page two, there is a total program of one hundred and thirty-eight million, three hundred and forty-two thousand, zero eight four dollars. Simplistically, if one were to subtract the school transfer fund, is the entire balance the cost to run the town of South Kingston? Or is there a number here that, what does it take to run the town of South Kingston? Minus the school transfer?
Well, the, the school tran- transfer, that forty-eight million, two sixteen, in addition to that, is that, is that the number that you're looking at, sir?
Uh, no. Above it, the one thirty-eight, three four two, zero eight four. And I'm looking for a figure, what does it cost to run the town of South Kingston? Leaving out the school.
It would be each of those funds, well, the, the way this is presented here, is you've got a hundred and thirty-eight million, three hundred and forty, uh, two dollars, uh, two hundred and forty-two thousand. The forty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven that I'm subtracting out is the school transfer, the transfer to the senior program, and the transfer to the wastewater program, because that's double counted money.
Right.
So the overall cost of town operations, including the school, would be eighty-nine million, seven hundred and seventy-four thousand. Okay? Now, if you said that you've got an eighty-nine million, seven hundred and seventy-four thousand, you could subtract the fifty-eight million, four thirty-four, which is the school's fund, and then you would also have to trans- uh, have to subtract from that the debt service associated with school facilities. And that number for the year was...
Regardless, the debt service was also associated with the cost of operating the schools. You know, take it all out.
I'm saying, yeah, between those two, between those two line items that, that are here, there's approximately fifty-one point one million dollars that's in the general fund that goes to school purposes. Maybe that's the easiest way of answering your question to you.
So if you remove the fifty-one from the eighty-nine in the millions, the balance is what it costs to run the town of South Kingston?
I would say yes.
Yeah, well, I, I think what you have to do is, if you go down in the next box, if you're looking at the general fund, which is what, where the money goes to run the town, if you look at the operating costs, it's nineteen million, eight hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Yes.
That's the general operations. Then in addition to that, the next line, the four million, one hundred and four thousand is the debt service. Some of that's school, most of it's school, some of it's town. And then in addition to that, you have your capital budget for the infrastructure costs, the, the equipment costs of one million, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand. So, wrap those all up and you're probably twenty-one, twenty-two million dollars.
Understand, but as a taxpayer, I would have to do that to find out how my town runs. If I wanted to, you know, make some examinations on how efficient all you guys are at running the town, as opposed to preying on the school committee.
I, I think that we're giving you more detail than, than that because you've got each of the different enterprise funds that are listed there as well. So I, I, I'm not sure what I could break out any differently for you. If you ask us to do something different, I can do it different. I would say to you that when you look at the property tax program itself, and you go back to the first page, when you look at property taxes and you say, how much of property tax is going to schools and how much is going for municipal purposes, that's shown there where seventy-seven point two cents of every dollar goes to the schools, either for their debt service or for their, the general fund transfer to them. So essentially, twenty-two point eight cents stays with the municipal services. But obviously, in addition to the property taxes, then you've got to add all the user fees that we collect for water or wastewater, those types of things.
Okay, so you've got to calculate. There isn't any one line, net cost to operate the town of South Kingston, fifty-eight dollars. You've got to plug away at it. I'm on the expense side, not the revenue side. Never mind the property tax and everything, what do you guys pay in rent, heat, light, salaries, vehicles, vacation days, lunch money, whatever you do?
One hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
And where was that located?
That's on first page.
First page, first number.
Through the first line, under column labeled Town, you'll see appropriation. Through the first line, under the column labeled town, you'll see appropriation.
But again, that's.
22,266,899 dollars.
But when he says run the town, are you talking about all the utilities as well, or are you talking the general fund? If you're talking the general fund, that's what it costs, is, is 22 million dollars in appropriation, less the 7.4 million dollars property taxes that stay with the town, of 14,789,000 dollars.
Okay, I'll have to rethink my question. I, I was just looking, whoever pays the bills for the town of South Kingston, uh, you know, you pay national grid for these lights and you probably have a gasoline account, you have wages, salaries, fringe, et cetera, et cetera.
That's all part of the 22 million that's on that first page.
Thank you.
Further questions from the public? Are there any questions here at the table, school committee or town council? Steve, did you have anything more before I adjourn?
Nope, that's, uh, that's everything that's on the broadsheets.
Well, do you want to go home early, or do you want to?
Give it a try.
I'll make it quick.
Oh, good. Thank you.
You know, I, I do find it amazing here, just, you know, fortunately, a few folks came out tonight, tough weather to hear us. My concerns, as you know, for 10 years, I've been worried about this horrific math problem, which again hit the newspaper today, and I've got the same detail Steve has. This is a huge number, I don't know what the formula's going to look like for next year, but whatever it's going to be, it's going to be tremendously damaging to our budget process. Huge pension number, and it's not going to go away, it's going to continue for a number of years. If you were here at the last meetings, we have a severe worry of the acceleration of the education funding formula, and you can, I can promise you with the deficits here at the state, and if you looked at some of the recent lawsuits by Pawtucket and One Socket, they want money, they want more money, and, and it's going to come out of the wealthier communities, communities, and that's us. I've talked to you a million times about your neighbors, inflation, gas, oil, heat, food, I won't do it anymore. Another thing that we don't seem to pay attention to is that, uh, General Assembly last year and the governor passed 131 million dollars of a motor vehicle taxation off to all of us, all the communities and all the citizens. 131 million. Of course, it was going to be temporary, but there it is again this year, 131 million dollars we have to parcel out. Governor Chafee has us looking at 165 million. So just in this current year, 306 million dollars of new taxes for the citizens of this state. If you do it on per capita basis, South Kingston's population of 3%, that's 9 million dollars more that our neighbors are coughing up, 9 million dollars more. This is unreal. Other thing that we really have to worry about here, um, the union negotiations, the school budget was put together with, I guess we refer to it as a zero and 20, zero salary increase and a 20% co-pay, I certainly hope that's possible, but that's still an open question. Another thing I think we have to worry about is the census that was just released. 0% growth, basically, in the state of Rhode Island, that, that is not healthy news. This means our revenue growth in the future is going to be very limited, we'll be lucky to do 2%, 3%, 4% per year, and just with what the pension numbers announced today, just the pension increases will eat all that up even at the 4% level annually. We have incredible difficulties coming at us specifically next year. I think we can get by the 11, 12 year, but 12, 13, 13, 14 are going to be a nightmare. And with that in mind, I think you know I want to return to the neighborhood schools, I want South Road opened, I want Curtis Corner closed. The numbers work, even with a 10% vacancy rate, if you average it out through the elementary schools, the high school, and leaving Broad Rock open, they'll be having much, much less population with years down the road. But I'm also thinking that the school committee, with that in mind, what great economic stimulus for our community. Frankly, people move here, and I've been in the real estate business for 20 years, they've moved here for our schools, a good part of the reason here, they're for the schools, but neighborhood schools. Heaven's sakes, if we, you know, sent them all out of town, they wouldn't be moving to this town. They want neighborhood schools, and I believe that's one way to bring property values back up in the South Road vicinity. But I can tell you, without doubt, in the Wakefield vicinity, even the talk of closing Wakefield School would be an absolute property tax value nightmare and an economic nightmare for our greater community and the Wakefield area. So I think we have got to make a decision this year on closing a school, specifically what I want is Curtis Corner. If you leave this off to next year, along with how we're going to budget with all these other issues I mentioned earlier to you, it is absolutely going to be a nightmare. So I think we need to really batten down the hatches and suck it up and see which school we need to close this year because the, the budgetary issues coming at us next year are going to be horrific. And I'd rather we get the geography done with the kids this year and worry about education and achievement next year, which really will hit us with the budget numbers. Thank you.
Any further comments? Steve Corley?
This would help me too, I think what the gentleman might have been asking for with the budget stuff is, when I'd gone to the school committee's budget meeting earlier and, and some of the meetings that I got here, you know, they actually, when you looked at the school expenditure or the town's expenditure, it said salaries are, vacation cost, healthcare cost is, so you could look at it and all those numbers start to mean a lot more. And, and I've seen those numbers in a lot of places, but this is like the final thing, it'd be a nice place to see it all wrapped up together. I know they're out there, I know they've been presented at different times, but this is kind of the, it'd be nice to see the couple more pages and the whole thing spread out, that's all, I think that's kind of what's being.
I think it's important to note that if, if you're looking for that level of detail, it's available on the website. The master budget that's there is approximately 400 pages. It provides each department and provides it through the personnel component, services, materials and supplies, and equipment for each department. So you can get that level of detail, not just for the general fund, but also for each of the enterprise funds and special revenue funds. So that detail is available. What we attempt to do here is to, is to boil down that document. That, that document is what we go through on, this year we went through for the four nights. I don't know how, what I present in four nights, I could present two night in that level of detail. So what I want to make sure people are aware of is that information is available. It's available for both the capital budget and it's available for the, for the general fund and all of the utilities. It's also available on the school website for the school fund itself for their expenditure statement and revenue statement. So Steve, if you need that detail, we can get it for you.
Thank you. Okay, this meeting is to listen to the public, so this is your last chance to be heard until tomorrow night. So I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Any further comments here at the table? And we have our second budget public hearing tomorrow at 7:00 in the town chambers. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.